All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I will call this work session of the Taggart Walton School Board to order at 4:40 PM. Thank you all for your patience, and without further ado, I'll hand it over to Point North.
Great. Well, good afternoon, everyone. John L. Bell with Spousal Strategies, part of the Point North team.
Hi, I'm Lisa Keho Kalili Shower, and we're thrilled to be here today.
Yes, first, we want to just take a moment to acknowledge that it is Indigenous Peoples' Day. As we really unpack and embed our work today, we wanted to just point out that acknowledgement. We are excited to get to work, and we are in a work session here, so we're excited to roll up our sleeves. We have a number of pieces of data to go through with you, as well as some discussion questions we're going to have an opportunity of unpacking. So I don't know if slides are going to be put up here. Okay, great. Thank you for that. So just an overview of what we are hoping to cover today. The first is for us to prioritize the 2016-2021 strategic planning goals. The second is for us to really unpack which of the goals remain relevant to the 2022 through 2027 strategic plan. And then how will we operationalize the equity policy into the strategic plan? This is something that we've heard a lot about, and so we're going to really attempt to try to marry the two here today. As we unpack this information, we really have three discussion questions that we'll have an opportunity of unpacking. One is how will we operationalize equity policy, as I indicated in the strategic plan? Based on the community input, how will we integrate stakeholder feedback into our goal setting? And how do we prioritize, how do the priorities we have identified embed within the equity policy priorities? So Lisa is going to walk us through this first piece of information, which was a board survey, which is an additional guide, additional piece of information to really help illuminate where you all are relative to the goal setting and the priority setting process. So with that, Lisa.
Thanks, John L. So our goal for today together is to seek consensus on the goals for the strategic plan. And we want to stay high level enough because the cabinet, which are members that are here today in this work session, can go that next layer. But we want to make sure that what we're talking about is high-level goals so that any of the specifics, the cabinet and our superintendent can get into those details, which we can do a little bit of, but we have an hour and a half, less than an hour and a half, with the board to be able to achieve a level of consensus on what those priority goals are in order for us to be able to finalize that strategic plan framework to be able to take out to the community in a very short period of time. So as we go through this process, we don't want to spend a great deal of time on this data. This is a snapshot to help us align and to be able to ensure that if there is areas where we need to have further discussion, that we have those. But we're really going to try and kind of facilitate the conversation so that we can achieve our big goal, which is the board really being able to weigh in on and set the direction for the strategic plan. So we're going to keep kind of that as our focus as we move forward. The cornerstones that we talked about at our last work session include the cornerstones that are already currently in the strategic plan. The survey goes through each of those cornerstones. And the very first question that was asked was around consensus relative to the long-term objective. So essentially, in your current strategic plan, and I would say if we are misarticulating this or understanding it all, I'm hoping that the cabinet will create a two-way dialogue here, and they'll lean in and be able to help us with this. But that you have one long-term objective under cornerstone one. We asked you to provide us feedback as to whether or not this long-term objective is still relevant as it relates to student achievement, and we saw a response rate of 60% said yes, and 40% said yes with slight modifications, and there was some additional commentary down below. And so that's how this survey and the survey results are framed. The next page is the strategies that help implement that long-term objective. And so in those strategies, there were six different strategies, and 100% of the board, so all five board directors said that within those strategies to implement that strategic plan goal, that formalizing the core instructional framework and continuing professional development, ensuring the framework supports the academic rigor and relevance required to support career and college readiness standards, that there was consensus that that is a top priority. So that's how you read this data. Does that make sense? I'm going to run through the slides, and then we're going to pause a bit and just have a conversation about each of these cornerstones. The next big question that we asked, Dr. Sue mentioned this at our last work session, think about what the next five years look like. What are those impacts that we are trying to ensure are embedded within the strategic plan? So we asked a big question, by 2027, we will. And we had board members that provided input. And so we want to give you a minute to just kind of look at what the answers to that question under student achievement, what your responses were. And since I know that we have Dr. Lynn on the Zoom, you can see this. But I'm going to maybe just see if you need anything, or if you've got, you're able to, you're able to access this.
Thank you so much for asking. Yes, I'm able to access it. Thank you.
Okay, great. So that's how this is set up. So I'm going to move through the other cornerstones. The second cornerstone was equity. We believe that success is the reflection of high expectations and a belief in all students. The long-term objective to implement that high-level strategic imperative is to eliminate the expectation and opportunity gaps. 40% of the board said yes as is, and 60% said yes with slight modifications. So in this particular one, we have thought that this is a good one to talk about and to spend a little time understanding some of the feedback in the comments. You'll see some of those comments are down below. Then we asked you to rank the strategies that were embedded in the strategic plan relative to that long-term objective. You'll see 100% of board members responded with the first one as being an important priority. The next slide is by 2027, we will, and then those are open-ended statements. The third cornerstone is talent. We hire, support, and retain catalysts for learning. I think we got some feedback just in terms of some of the words in each of those cornerstones, which we can work through. But the long-term objective to help us implement that talent, strategic imperative was around district staff are hired that reflect the following values, and then there's a whole set of values. So if we could go to the, yep, that's the right slide. 40% said, let's leave it as is. 40% said slight modifications, and 20% said no. So we want to talk about this slide, and there's some good feedback down below. The strategies to implement that strategic long-term goal are listed on the next page. 100% unanimous educators new to TTSD are supported through training, coaching, and systemic encouragement in order to increase their effectiveness in the classroom and a sense of satisfaction with their work. The in 2027, big open-ended question follows again under the third cornerstone of talent. The fourth cornerstone of talent, we've already added safety. That was something that we felt there was consensus in regards to the framework. So we've already added that. We create and nurture a school community where every individual feels safe, valued, and connected. The long-term objective is families are empowered and their students attend school ready to learn. 20% said as is, and 80% said yes, but with modifications. We want to spend time talking about that. There's some good feedback down below. The strategies to implement this, again, we saw 100% of board members said the district will develop a communication plan with all families during key student transitions to emphasize priorities for students on the pathway to college and career readiness. The next slide, by 2027, we will. We had a few comments here. Okay, so this is about where we've been, 2016 to 2021. So those are the strategic plan, strategic imperatives, long-term objectives, and strategies. During that time period, you have implemented and led an equity policy that has done a lot of work in that time period, and we need to thread all of these together. So if we look at, the district commits to the following high-level equity priorities, which are listed here, equitable access to high-quality, well-rounded education, equitable allocation of resources, empowering voice, workforce diversity, professional development, cultural competency and accountability. You can see quite a bit of that already within the previous strategic plan. But what we need to be able to do is clearly thread the previous strategic plan, what we're lifting and bringing into the new strategic plan, and how it implements these priorities. If equity is in the center of our framework, and it's the work that we're doing here, how do we ensure that we're threading this together, not creating more and more goals, but actually creating goals that live and embed within these priorities? An example of that would be the next slide. If the cornerstone is talent, the equity policy commitment is around professional development, a strategy you already have in place. Educators new to TTSD are supported through training, coaching, and systemic encouragement in order to increase their effectiveness in the classroom and sense of satisfaction with their work. Do you kind of see how we threaded that? This strategy listed here was one that the board, 100% of board members, agreed was a priority. This is the work we're doing today. So the data is really meant to give you kind of an understanding of where your fellow board directors are to make sure that we're all clear on the one long-term objective for each of those cornerstones and the strategies to implement that. We're hoping we don't get into the strategies piece. That's really something that is led by the district cabinet and leadership. We want to keep you at the long-term objective and the goal within each of those strategic cornerstone. So I just very quickly walked you through many, many slides, but I wanted to orient you in terms of what the data is, what it means, and how it can help us in our work together. But it's really not meant to be a presentation, or we spend a lot of time in the data, just a snapshot to help us really kind of move forward. So I'm going to pause and just see what questions you might have as we kind of get into some of the details, cornerstone by cornerstone.
So will each, each goal be linked explicitly to an equity policy commitment? Is that the idea?
That's our idea. We're open to suggestions and thoughts for the board.
I'm very into it. I'd never thought of that before. It's a great idea. And then the only other one, like, kind of question, or maybe it's a pitch, is, and maybe this is the next layer. We've got the cornerstone, and we've got these goals that align with equity policy commitments. We've got strategy that cabinet develops. And then, and I was the annoying person in the comments who kept talking about the accountability metrics. I'm also thinking like the next step of it, or maybe, again, this is part of strategies, is like which specific measure that we've committed to is aligned to this so that it's all kind of flows directly. That's what my next kind of right went from there. But I love the, I love the framework. I think this makes a lot of sense.
And maybe that piece is where cabinet can come in and say, this is the best way or metric for us to use to measure that piece, but I could be off base. Dr. Lynn, any comments, thoughts?
Oh, not so far. You kind of lost the sound there after Tristan started to speak. Okay, yeah, not so far.
Any members of cabinet that have anything to add, or want to kind of dive in? Dr. Sue, anything you want to share, thoughts?
No, not this time. I think it's a matter of the board digging in now into those cornerstones or whatever the format will be, identifying both the equity policy and the goals. And I would offer, share that the equity policy and the goals are probably one and the same in many ways based on this data. And then we can certainly, then what we will do is we'll take the strategy and then put the metric to it.
Okay, the first cornerstone, student achievement. If you look at some of the slight modifications, there's some good comments here. If we align the student achievement with the equity policy and look at how the equity policy is framed.
Could you please email the PowerPoint?
Patty's on it.
It's on its way.
Thank you.
And maybe we could just read until you get the slides. Or I'll just read the text under the responses. One was the wording is really clunky. The phrase equipped to transition to their, so the next step after high school graduation is just a brick. Something more like, quote, graduates ready for their future. The second comment we received from the board was should address the increasing diversity of our students and also talk about preparing them to be successful in a globalized world. So that's under the 40% with modifications. We got those two comments.
So this portion is where we duke it out and get the language right.
Yes, please.
Well, I know which one was Jill. So Jill, do you want to offer your thinking here?
Yeah, it's, I think the achievement piece actually is probably going to be the easiest one to do because we hashed that one out pretty hard, and what we want is kids to succeed academically. And so it's just a matter of phrasing it a little more succinctly and punchily, and then making sure we've got the right goals behind it, is my thinking on this one.
And I see that relating, if we're looking at equitable access to a high-quality, well-rounded education supply. That every student shall have access to curricular, co-curricular, and extracurricular offerings that incentivize good attendance and create a joyful learning experience for students. And then I see, you know, part of a maybe more qualitative metric being reducing barriers to participation in extracurricular activities, athletics, athletics, arts, et cetera. So maybe bringing not all of that, but some of that language into what that objective would be, or making some of those smaller goals underneath that objective.
So Vice Chair, I would say to that point, you have data in your equity audit relative to student participation. Extracurricular activities that you could mention up. So again, I would urge, as you're thinking about those goals, think about the equity audit report that you now have and the quantitative data that can be measured year over year, that's called out in ACC and align that.
Because those are the ones that we can make those clear threads, and it's not a ton of extra.
And as I take a look at the response here, typically, my head goes to the top three, vote categories, if you will, as potentially being ones that you might want to focus to because there isn't anything on that graph that can't be measured quantitatively. But thinking about those top three, as I look at the others, they are finely honed relative to the overall arching goal. And they should be ones that provide the vision and the intent, then we align the strategy to that.
So question, as we are revising the objective, do we also want to be looking at the by 2027 sort of that end-end goal and making sure that we are capturing what we want to achieve in the objective?
So I really like whoever made comment number two's goal for this one, that we tie it to, oh, sorry. I really like comment, response number two's suggestion on this one, that we tie it to third grade reading, ninth grade on track, graduation scores. Those are our three big goals. Obviously, test scores at every level matter, but those three really are kind of the key ones. If we can get those ones, then we have a pretty good idea that the rest will fall in. I don't know if anybody wants to claim ownership of number two and brag a little bit. It was really good.
I will always claim my reference to accountability, but I am a little confused. So I want to make sure I understand before we go further, what is the board doing today versus what we're deferring to cabinet to do afterwards? So maybe you could, instead of me guessing, I thought, so I thought that was cabinet work.
Yes.
That is cabinet work.
That's my understanding, and I see ahead not.
Okay, so today we are focused on the objective on the second page.
So I would say the definition of the cornerstone, we've all, there's been consensus around the word student achievement remains as a cornerstone. The words underneath it, we prepare students for success in a rapidly changing world, should reflect your long-term objective. And the words for your long-term objective don't necessarily have to be the exact same words from five years ago and need to be thinking about your policy ACC and what your big 2027, kind of what impact will we have? So you've got all these different data points. This is the moment where the board really has the opportunity to shape the words and get clear on what we mean when we set this goal. Because then the next steps are the strategies which the cabinet would be able to do. And there's been lots of good work around kind of how you implement ACC in terms of the equity audit, and then the prioritization of the strategies that have already been in the plan. But that's work that we are not trying to focus on today because I think it'll be a bit of a lift within an hour to get clear on just this work here. I mean, this is a lot.
So with that, a couple of suggestions. I like Jill, what I agree with the clunkiness. So I think what you're suggesting is all students are academically successful and graduate ready for their future. I like that. And the second piece of this that I'd like to incorporate is language from Dr. Sue's goals, which is all students, all students are increasing in academic achievement, and gaps are shrinking at the same time. Because I think of that as sort of our overarching district goal for the last at least two to three years, was that we want both of those two things to be our sort of northern stars. All students are doing better, and the gap between students is shrinking. So we can massage that thought, that idea into the mashup that Jill has suggested with the current versus what she has. I think those are kind of the ingredients that I'm thinking. But yeah.
Go ahead. I also like the, what number five said about being successful in a globalized world because we have that in the ACC policy where it says that we're ensuring as an organization the ability of every student to successfully navigate a culturally complex society and global economy. So I think that we should include some of that in here.
I think so, too.
Yeah.
So Ben, I think what you were saying earlier, the first part really is the long-term objective. And the second part really is that high-level goal, which I think is the board's work. And then the strategies within that goal are the, yeah. So I think we can have the goal be the all students, you know, and it could be phrased along the lines of our diverse students are all successful. You know, get the word diversity up in there. And successful in a global future, kind of, you know, how, get that word in there somewhere. And then for our goal, talk about what you mentioned, Ben, the raising all boats type of.
So closing gaps and increasing achievement.
Yeah.
Yep. I think incorporating that language ties this goal to the overall mission of the district.
I agree.
Did we give you enough words to work with, or do we need words?
And then potentially, if we were wanting two to three goals, I think still underneath, no more than three under each cornerstone, we then could have a test score goal. The closing and increasing goal, right?
I think closing and increasing would be for all of them, graduation rate, ninth grade on track, third grade.
Oh, got you, got you.
Yeah, all of them are going up, and the gap is going, is shrinking on all three.
This is a question for Dr. Sue. Should, should we stick with the language of college and career ready? What should you say next after high school?
I would actually ask for Director Field's input as well. Is that language that is still current when we, when we talk about both college and career readiness? Or are there other terms we should consider? Please use your mic.
Thank you. I'd say we're looking to shift that term to being life-ready as we're trying to embed career, college, and SCL, being more holistic around readiness for next steps post-high school. So we could shift to life-ready.
Yeah, so Dr. Lynn, the recommendation is shifting to life, life-ready in the sense of, you know, providing the broadest opportunities for students to make choices either to go down a college path or immediately into career, and also a recognition of the need for holistic social emotional wellness.
That sounds good.
Something like are equipped to, equipped to transition into, or equipped to be life-ready and successfully navigating culturally complex society and global economy? Just like making it clunky for you.
Did you say?
Set it up one more time.
Successfully navigating.
Successfully navigating a culturally complex society and global economy.
Okay, so let me see. I've got this. All students are increasing achievement and gaps are decreasing. All students are equipped to be life-ready and successfully navigating a culturally complex society and global economy. Is that where we're at?
We somehow wanted to talk about our students as diverse, right?
It doesn't, all students encompass all of our diversity.
You know, it's, it's kind of like all lives matter, right? All doesn't mean all.
All doesn't mean all.
I think the use of diverse calling it out adds attention to it, which is what we want.
I I would even say are increasingly diverse because it seems that diversity is increasing rapidly. That to recognize that is also.
Are increasingly diverse. So there's there's two pieces here. There's the statement that's used to describe what student achievement is. Which you see on the slide as cornerstone one, your your tracking word.
Yes.
Okay, so cornerstone one, student achievement. So perhaps we say we prepare an increasingly diverse increasingly diverse students for success in a rapidly changing world. And then underneath that is all students are increasing achievement and gaps are decreasing. All students are equipped to be life ready and successfully navigating a culturally complex society and global economy. Does that, Dr. Lynn, link that a little closer?
Yeah, I think so.
And then I think we I'm very visual, so I have to read yours. I know. Well, and I have to write it like a couple times to make sure I've got the words. There's too many words ending in Y at the very end of that sentence that makes it, I think, feel a little clunky. But I want to figure out how we get all of those ideas distinctly in there.
Could you read?
Can we use globalized world instead of?
Could you read it to us one more time, please?
Okay, so um the cornerstone one, student achievement. We prepare increasingly diverse students for success in a rapidly changing world.
What if we switch it to active instead of we prepare students for our diverse students are being are, and then I can't remember the rest of it, are ready for.
This, yeah, says we prepare students for success, so.
Where are we?
Okay, what about so to get at your point more um action oriented verbs. Are increasingly diverse students are ready for a rapidly changing world.
Yeah, we are prepared, might be better. Or academically and emotionally prepared. We want to go into detail, never to go, can we do?
And maybe it's not rapidly changing world, maybe it's no, do we could lift culturally complex society and global economy or a global economy into this first statement to get tighter with the second long term objective. Or use localized. Prepared in a culturally complex. Okay, um how about? It's still a bit wordy, but so the statement under student achievement, are increasingly diverse students are prepared to navigate a culturally complex society and global economy. Long term objective, all students are increasing achievement and gaps are decreasing. We've lost, we lost life ready. All students are life ready, increasing achievement and gaps are decreasing. That still feels a little. Increasing achievement. Can we? If this is one of the goals right underneath, let's if that ties to like test scores, maybe, and if we call it out there, maybe we don't need to specify that piece. So all students are life are equipped to be life ready.
So I think it might be more useful if we've got the gist of the ideas to just go with them and let you guys wordsmith it and bring that back to us. Because without like the words in front of us on a Google Doc, we're going to spend hours trying to figure out each sentence.
I think we've gotten what some of those keywords are that are important. Um, we may also be able to collapse the long term objective and what we're trying to achieve in the subtitle, the student achievement. So that we're tighter there.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so you get the feel for kind of what we're doing as we go through the the rest of these cornerstones. Any other comments before we leave student achievement?
So this is just a process question. Um based on what Jill said, is there another opportunity for you to engage with us to review this again?
Yeah, it's not scheduled, so we need to kind of talk a little about the timeline. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Um, our timeline right now is that the cabinet would get to work and we can work in collaboration with the cabinet on the wording here and they can embed kind of the strategies within that. That'll need to go back to the board for review prior to being distributed out to the community advisory committee, which is tentatively set for November second. So there's so there's a lot to achieve with feeling good about the words and the strategies between tonight and uh November second, or maybe a little before then, so that our CAC has the ability to to review materials before participating in the meeting.
So to maybe.
Sorry, maybe to adjust that idea, that thought is that, you know, our we're we're talking about big ideas and and words that we want embedded within the goals. And I it would be appropriate, I'll ask the board members to to then let you finalize the wording on our behalf based on our wishes in terms of what we can see reflected in those goals. And then you would present that to the cabinet. Is that will that work? I guess I'd like to hear from other board members.
My first thought was it would be great to see it on paper before we say it's done. Um, but I think that can be done digitally. Like, I don't think we need to schedule a meeting necessarily.
The other thing I could do is you could draft a document and send it out to the board members. And as long as board members are responding only to you individually and not the entire board, we can get a feedback loop going without it breaking public meeting law.
Yeah, that was my thought as well, being able to look at it visually sort of see any changes and then a tight timeframe of if there were edits. So you guys had time to adjust.
And I think it, I mean, speaking for myself, but hopefully the board, I think uh like forty eight seventy two hour timeline is acceptable. Like, we have to move quickly and we get that, so.
And head the next one. Okay. So the next uh cornerstone was equity. We believe that success is a reflection of high expectations and a belief in all students. Long term objective, eliminate the expectation and opportunity gaps. There's some feedback that's listed down below. The cornerstone is the right one. Sentence should be expanded to better frame our district's equity stance. I think it's the idea of it being also, and how does it stand as its own cornerstone and how does it show up in the other cornerstones? It's also the result of culturally sustaining practices that are aligned to our vision, must have a way of measuring and continually improving teacher administrator practice. So I think right now to kind of address how it it fits within the framework that we've discussed. Um, we're playing with a couple different framework graphics to send out for review. But one is the idea that uh there would be a few equity goals, but the bigger concept is the equity goals live in every single one of the cornerstones. Not really segmented out separately. A statement um that was put into that draft framework, um almost as a replacement of this was your vision statement, only we activated it, so equity is when students thrive and graduates and graduates prepared to succeed. So we took this statement, we actually utilized your vision and thought that was in alignment with what you mean when you say equity. So that's probably a a good conversation. We didn't spend a huge amount of time at the last work session together. But it would be replacing this with your vision statement and then keeping it in the center as was discussed. Every student thrives in school and graduates prepared to succeed. That's your current PTSD visual. I mean, we also have in the equity policy at the very beginning, the commitment, you know, is the belief that every student has the right to equitable educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering and just. And that could also be a piece that really anchors the equity cornerstone.
Say that one more time.
Sure. Um the belief that every student has the right to equitable educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering and just.
I like that a lot.
Yeah, I like that too. Um I'm I was wondering about how to make it more active and also how to embed um focus on teaching and leadership in that somehow. Because a belief doesn't necessarily hold you to anything.
Correct. Do you think that could be one of the goals under the objective? Would that work?
I mean, we could make it a commitment that we are committed to.
Having the right.
Yeah, or yeah, that every student you know, we are committed to something besides belief or hoping or, you know, again, one of those more accountability driven words. And then can say that every student has the or we just, oh, you're right. You just start it with every student has the right.
Yes, that's exactly what I was just saying.
Got there eventually. Thanks for letting me.
I feel like that speaks more directly to equity than the vision statement does.
Yeah. Yeah, so just starting it with every student has the right to equitable educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering and just.
As a replacement of the existing.
We believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's a nice tie to your policy.
Yeah.
Looks like you have thoughts.
I have a clarifying question. I noticed that each of the cornerstone has a verb after we. And I just, and I under, what, can you say that the equity one again?
Every student has the right to equitable educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering and just.
I I guess maybe for me, I see a discrepancy in the different cornerstones where all the other cornerstones have like, I just, we create, we prepare. And the other one was we hire.
So then a different action, so a different verb that's more action. I think it was getting away from the belief piece.
We will, we provide equitable educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering and just for every student. Or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, like that.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, and I, yeah, so. Um, yeah, I I really appreciate that because if we're talking about actionable goals. One of the things that's missing, sorry, one of the things, one of the things that are missing from um the things around equity is like, what are the actionable things that you're going to have with an infrastructure of practice? So I would want to see how are you partnering with families? So there's some very explicit things that I would that would cater to then uh both objectives be below that action statement.
So does the we provide language get at that concern you're raising?
Yeah, I feel like there's action, active action. I think as Dr. Lynn had highlighted, like um there's there's not action words connected to equity. And so that was a a part that I wanted to lift up.
So we provide equitable educational opportunities and a school experience that is validating, empowering and just for every student. So I think something also just kind of happened here a bit, which is the idea that we will continue with the we. So we're going to need to change the first one, just so, I mean, it's not flag that because we started with our increasingly diverse students are prepared for. So we'll
Sorry, there's a delay on this, so I'm speaking and then it comes out like a minute later. My apologies.
Okay. Pretty powerful one. Are we ready to move to the third cornerstone?
So for the
the objective.
For the objective, is that how we're going to do it?
Yep.
I think um it wasn't me who wrote it, but comment number five I do think is important to lift up. Trying to think how to do that.
I I do think, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Dr. Lynn.
If you say we provide an education that would I'm forgetting the language, but that that does implicate teachers and and leaders in a particular way, I think.
So is the objective of our equity cornerstone just to eliminate expectation and opportunity gaps? I guess my feedback is that feels a little too narrow for what we're trying to accomplish in our equity work. Um, I'm just not exactly sure how to expand that. Part of it is, and this was also my comment in the the climate, safety, climate and culture one too, so I'm not sure where one ends and the other begins, but it's not just about the gaps, it's also about students feeling welcome. You know, like they're part of the community, like their identity is validated and um, you know, they're supported. So I think that those are the two places where I think in our terms of equity work is one is like, what does the data say academically? And then two, it's almost like the qualitative and quantitative. Then do students feel included and empowered? Does that make sense?
And this is where I think we're running into a problem, not knowing if equity is one of the four cornerstones or if equity is at the center and then the other cornerstones are going to carry the goals. That's because if it's we're concerned for students feeling supported, that's climate and culture, right? With the equity piece of it included. Um, and so it seems like we're kind of. And so it seems like we're kind of going both ways back and forth because we don't know exactly what the model looks like yet.
I would, one thought on that is maybe we look at language from the accountability piece of the policy and, and maybe pull, because that's less connected to what we could put into another cornerstone, but really gets to, this is how we are providing and ensuring and doing the things. And maybe that's what we anchor. The equity objective is yes, we're going to wanting, we want to eliminate and increase whatever those words are. Yes, we want to do these things, but there's kind of a more global objective for that and we could pull that into something from the accountability piece.
It's okay to have, because I think that's what, oh, sorry, Dr. Lynn, I apologize. Go ahead.
Are we still on number two?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
What I, what I recall from this last conversation was like, we wanted to do both. We wanted throughout and in the center. And so I think if that's true, like academic achievement is part of our equity work, climate and culture is part of our equity work. So elevating this here, I think that's how I'm justifying my own position, Debbie, Tristan, Jill, Marvin.
No, I agree with that. I think that we should call it out and it, it also is embedded in everything else. Yeah, I would agree with you on that. And I also agree with you that this just seems a little bit too narrow, but that is kind of what we're doing with equity work, right? We're trying to provide students with what they need in order to succeed. So if eliminating the expectation and opportunity gap is what they need to succeed, then that's what we should be doing.
We are under the assumption that this is in the center, the words that we've kind of been able to see consensus around and that every one of your strategies that the cabinet's working on will be equity, will have equity within that in your policy ACC. So we can spend some more time on the long-term objective. The statement that you have already come up with is really powerful and links directly to your policy. I don't know if we need to do a lot more work here or if we need the cabinet to be able to weigh in as it relates to the, how it fits in with each of those three other cornerstones. We can come back to this as well. We have two more to make it through. So I also, just given the time, want to try and make sure that we're kind of moving through.
If I can just add one note, I think it would be useful to bring to cabinet's attention is some stuff around the allocation of resources. An equitable allocation of resources could be useful in this cornerstone.
I agree.
And one more. And maybe just in that, yes, we want to eliminate the expectation and opportunity gaps and then say, you know, maybe just be more specific, although not goal. Strategy specific, but using longitudinal analysis that could include and then kind of list off maybe some of those areas. The outcomes. Enrollment in advanced courses, yeah, some of those things that are mentioned in the accountability piece, just sort of, and then that would give cabinet really clear data points to pull from.
All right. Cornerstone three, talent. We hire, support and retain catalysts for learning. We have some words that maybe we want to improve on.
Someone really loves to work catalyst, by the way, so that's real clear.
Okay, thoughts? Maybe we start with Dr. Lynn and see if you have any thoughts or feedback.
Yeah, I agree with the word catalyst, you know, it's, we're not here just to start something. We're here to finish it, right? We're here to, you know, produce students who are going to be successful. And so I like the two rewrites, we hire, support and retain dedicated and student focused employees, or we develop support and retain excellent educators who can teach all children well.
Can you say the last one one more time?
It's number five, the second sentence in number five.
Oh, oh, got it, got it.
The only thing I would caution there is that I want to make sure it's more than just teachers. It's all staff. And so it's not just people who teach kids well. It's also all of our staff who support students well.
I agree with that.
Agreed, agreed.
Do one of these two statements, I made more with the board so we can start to narrow.
What if we mesh the two, we develop support and retain dedicated and student focused employees?
Number one.
It's like half.
I think those are all number one.
We develop, well, that was higher. It was, I guess it was only different actually. So develop versus hire.
Oh. I like number one.
We hire, support and retain.
I actually prefer hire than to develop because we don't, sometimes we just hire people in, we don't actually develop them. We also do that.
I think that's part of, some of the feedback has resonated with the board about professional development. That's a key aspect of your policy ACC. And I think some of the equity audit work, so you could include hire, support, develop and retain.
You also have some really good language under the workforce diversity section of your ACC policy that could be lifted up in this section as well.
Like the racially, linguistically and culturally representative workforce, I think.
Right. I was trying to decide if that was objective or under the cornerstone, but I think under the cornerstone probably makes it more prominent and I like that. Can you say that again, Tristan?
So we could say we hire, support, develop and retain dedicated, well, do we want to keep dedicated and student focused employees or switch it to we are dedic- dedicated, oh, we want to say we hire.
I think I got it. It's all, everything you just said, we hire, support, develop and retain a racially, linguistically and culturally representative workforce of dedicated employees. All the things.
I like it.
Except I really like the student books part too.
Dedicated and student focused employees.
That's where bingo for the
Is your, yes, we hire, support, develop and retain a racially, linguistically and culturally representative workforce of dedicated and student focused employees.
Fair.
Oh, yeah, or she can.
I don't know if it's too late to add anything, but I was wondering when it comes to student centered, also mentoring, mentioning something about acknowledging mental health and being cognizant of mental health challenges that students might face. Also having something about how staff should be, I guess, understanding and able to make accommodations for students that might have mental health, to just kind of have that focus on there.
Any thoughts?
I think that's a really great idea. I think it probably goes at the goal level rather than at the objective level.
I think so too.
Yeah, and potentially in cornerstone four to safety, culture and climate.
That as well.
So under student focus, the, under this, I mean, I I like the way, where this goal is going. Would we then have the opportunity beneath that to then some more specifics with respect to uh, you know, accountability measures and expectations for district staff, or is this really focused on retention?
Can you say that again, Marvin? I'm confused. You think, you think it's too focused on retention?
No, I'm asking if that's the goal, is the focus here on retention or are we also talking about student success?
So I think that we're going to have what, probably three goals under this one, something like that. So I think one that's about retaining staff is important. I think one that is we, having staff that mirror our student populations is important. And then I think one around how we support and develop staff. And I think that can also, yeah, the more I'm thinking about it, actually, I think, I think your point is probably better into the climate, culture, safety. One, now that I'm thinking about it, because I'm not sure how we can fit it as smoothly here. I don't know, maybe we can. Maybe I'm just not imaginative enough.
Can I, oh, good, 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 good. Cause I was going to follow up with a comment for your question.
Uh, as well, um, I think it does work better in a different cornerstone. But when it comes to measuring student success, I had a couple of questions as to what that entirely entails. Who defines student success and like when these definitions were created? Uh, just in general, like when it comes to student success, like who created the like requirements of what it means for a student to be successful?
So what Sue just recommended is all the ACC's accountability section would be the metrics I think we would use for defining student success. If that's what you mean, and I'll show you, let's show you this. And then in the first cornerstone, academic achievement, we, we chose graduation, third grade reading and ninth grade up track as the, well, tentatively, that hasn't been established yet. But those are some measures of student success.
And with the equity audit. And also with the equity audit in partnership with families and students, we would ask students and families, what does success mean for you as well? So when we're, when we use a plot data that's aligned to the bigger infrastructure of education, so we want to make sure that students feel seen, heard, valued, supported, but also have the skills necessary to be able to have any choice open up to them. So that's the academic component, but then the other part around how we build that definition of success requires again, that equity lens around how do you, who do you ask? Right, because that's the, that's the individualized, but also focused of every student. That's, that's, so you ask students and families, that's our department, we do a lot of that. Great question.
So can I follow up around your comment? Hiring and retaining teachers in particular that understand social, emotional and that mental health component. I think what I'm hearing, maybe some of the responses that maybe mental, uh, social, emotional, mental health would fall into the next cornerstone, but I thought what I heard you say, and I didn't want to depart from this is in the hiring, what we've heard through our community engagement efforts, we want to be able to see ourselves and our teachers. But what I just heard you also say is we want to make sure our teachers, our educators also understand the importance of the social and emotional health. Is that, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I also want to make sure that I'm hearing the comments that you're saying.
There's been a couple of teachers in the past that haven't had the time and don't think the S E L lessons are important. So I think it's important for any new staff that we're hiring, they understand the importance and they are willing to kind of like have that level of vulnerability with their students, like it's a very difficult skill to have, but I think it have, it like creates that community within students itself. So um, having that component is important when it comes to hiring staff.
And maybe as we build goals around the training and coaching and encouragement of, of teachers and staff, we then add that S E L component to that. And that would fit really nicely cascade under that.
Not to put too fine a point to that, I spent two days with the educator advancement council meeting on this very point. And the fact of the matter is, is that educational preparation programs are not, are just now coming to the understanding of why that component is important. So as we are focused on this goal, I think it is important that we lean heavily into the professional development that they receive as part of their ongoing development as a teacher and TTSD relative to this issue. Rather than the initial expectation that they will come already formed with that ability.
So maybe those goals are recruit, routine and support and then develop staff. All right. Those are making progress.
The objective we haven't talked about yet is that, should we do that now or should we come back later?
I think you have some of the, yeah, pieces, pieces of it already.
Cause I mean, the, this, it felt a little, this one felt a little off to me, like yeah, a little disconnected. The format's a little different than the other ones. Like it kind of feels like it just became like a list of things, which is fine. Yeah, some of them are nouns, some of them are not.
Well, I wonder if the way in which I just kind of summarized those three key elements of recruiting, retaining, supporting and developing form the basis of that long-term objective, but I'd be interested to hear the board's thoughts around that.
No, I think that's exactly right. And I think in, in developing sort of new goals around that, I think what all the comments were was just like, we need data, like we need numbers to kind of that actionable sort of stuff, how like, how many people are staying and a lot of those tied to data, tied to surveys. So I think narrowing it to those three and then threading it through both the workforce diversity and the professional development components and probably cultural competency too with ACC.
I thought that
So that actually was be that.
Three, right? Yep.
Yeah.
Sorry, Dr. Lynn.
No, I'm sorry. I'm trying to, so I'm trying to figure out how to jump in here without jumping. So please, whatever we can figure that out. But Ben read a version of it that I thought was really interesting, kind of emphasized the diversity of the changing staff population.
Yeah, that, that was for the just cornerstone description, basically. But I think there's opportunity to have that be that foundation is what you're saying of the objective part. So maybe we should just stop.
I think we got the just the words we can cool synthesize it.
That's great.
I know it's hard being on Zoom and there's kind of activity and maybe side conversations to Dr. Lynn, one of the comments that Dr. Irvin just made was the three big words in the ACC policy that are maybe framed better than what I said was recruiting, retaining, support and develop would be your workforce diversity, your professional development and your cultural competency. So we would thread that as your long-term objective to meet the cornerstone that our chair just went through and Our chair just went through and and detailed, which we are going to double check, all of those words are. Um, that we have written down, but it seemed like there's, there was consensus with that cornerstone definition and then building that out. And again, relying on your policy that you're.
Yeah, I agree.
Alright, cornerstone four. So again, reflective of the conversations, the last work session, the word safety has been integrated into the cornerstone. And then prioritizes the first word, so um. The current statement is we create and nurture a school community where every individual feels safe, valued and connected. Long-term objective, families are empowered and their students tend school ready to learn. There's some feedback down below. So open to comments and um, thoughts, how to reframe this or enhance it.
Marvin, do you want to start?
Yes, thank you. Um, I, I, I think number two is, is, is important in terms of speaking to school climate and culture. And then uh. This idea of being welcoming and inclusive, I think is important and should be part of that overall. Uh, and then number five, as you probably figured out, I'm number five, but I just, again, emphasizing. That we will be the kind of community that. Rather than saying we will attempt to do something, you're saying we will do it.
And I would just like to make my case for eliminating the word climate from this cornerstone. In part because we now have a climate committee that is talking about climate change. Um, and so if we use climate to mean the environment of the, the school and how safe and welcoming and comfortable it was. Which is what we originally intended it for in this context, I think it's sort of confusing. Um, and since we're talking, we're pulling out safety, if we talk about the culture of the school and the safety of the school. I think we really get to the climate of the school is how we used to mean it as climate. And so I don't know that we need it here as well. That's my, that's my idea and I'm sticking to it.
What if we add the um, welcoming and inclusive to this? And we say we create and nurture a welcoming and inclusive school community where every individual feels safe, valued. Connected and can we have and seen or seen, because a lot of kids don't feel seen in school.
I love that.
Now we're gonna make you say it again to be.
I will say I like climate being included because I think school climate is different than school culture. And I think there are parts of school climate that are different than school safety. Um, and those are actually the things that I care the most about. Um, and they get to the seen, connected value, you can feel safe at school, but not feel seen and not feel valued or connected. Um, so that would be my um, my thinking on that, but I think by you adding that, it actually resolves the rest of mine. I think, I think this one, this one I thought was closer than the others, so that gets us good shape from my perspective.
And I think we can pull the empowering voice piece, because I mean, this was a little trickier because you have. The physical safety and also just sort of emotional, mental safety, you have the culture. I mean, it feels like drawing a whole bunch of things without making this a really long sort of objective and sentence underneath the cornerstone. But I think that what Director Jaime said, hold enough into that, but then when we go into. Um, the objective and the goals, then we can pull out that, you know, basically a goal for safety, a goal for climate. And a goal for culture and then drawing that through the empowering voice piece.
And not to forget the comment that she made about.
And S E L, yeah. And to your, your point of shaky, I think it's, it's twofold, I would, I don't need to go back to our last, relative to talent. But there, I, I noticed that there was a um, a goal or suggested goal relative to staff wellness. Staff have to be well for students to be well. And so I think those I would offer uh, for your consideration, a mirrored approach. Um, because again, while as we are waiting for ed prep programs to incorporate that into their curriculum. Uh, we want to make sure, number one, we have individuals that have the emotional intelligence to understand the importance of that. Number two, for those that may not yet be there within our, our current workforce, um, how we um, encourage and develop them. So that they will address uh, those issues. Um, and then also, but at the same time, attend to their wellness, so that they can attend to their students' wellness.
Is the word individual, is that broad enough to not just speak to students, but to teachers and staff? So the community is defined as. All individuals? Yeah. So we could actually even kind of put some definition around when we say this word, we mean, it was similar to what you've done in the um. The equity policy. But that could be pretty powerful.
So I, I do think and we.
Could say, could be um, everybody, right, like all teachers, staff, custodians, anybody.
Anyone in the school community, yeah. Dr. Lynn?
Yeah, um, and I, and I'm raising my hand, but I don't know how, so I figured out, but I um. I think when you start talking about staff wellness, you're, you're talking about things like compensation, um. Workload, work environment, I can get, and get. That. Are very complicated and it may be more, more appropriate in a, in a bargaining context, that's, I don't know.
Perhaps it needs to be in this cornerstone and then also touched on in the cornerstone three under the. How we define retain and support. The cabinet might be able to wrestle with that a little.
Yeah, I think that would be a more appropriate place for.
Five fifty-eight, so I've got two minutes left. Um, what I heard was we create and nurture a welcoming and inclusive school community where every individual feels safe, valued, connected and seen. Okay, long-term objective.
Yeah, my feedback on this one is that it. It doesn't speak to school climate or culture, it actually doesn't really speak to safety either. So I'm not sure how this sentence got adopted for this cornerstone, but it doesn't feel like a good match to me. I mean, it's important, I'm not trying to downplay the importance, and I actually like linking attendance specifically to it. Uh, because I think attendance is a really good measure of whether or not a school is safe and uh, inclusive, but yeah. Maybe it's just simply students feel. Oh man, I don't know, now I'm trying to conflate our description to the.
Students report they want to come to school.
Well, maybe it's a, you know, we, we will, we will create and nurture a school community where every individual feels safe. Valued and connected, and if you can connect, I think some of what John said to the end of that, in terms of feeling seen and so on. You can also add climate to, to that, we can say we create, we will create and nurture a school community.
I would agree with you, Chair, though, that we attendance thus have a lot to do with um, safety. And uh, culture and climate, right, if you feel welcome, if you feel seen, you are going to attend more. If somebody has gone out to your home and made a home visit, you will attend that. Somebody knows how to deal with social, emotional learning and teach it well, you'll want to come to school, right? So it's about having those things embedded. Um, families being empowered to come to uh, our schools. Um, is also another uh, important aspect that uh, must be. You know, that is part of our culture and climates of schools, right? If we, um, if our families feel like we're an institution and they don't want to come to us, then. And we don't feel like we're welcoming the environment, then uh, we're not doing our job as with this cornerstone, so.
Not sure how to word it.
What if we kept it, to your point, so, because I do like the piece about being empowered, but we could add something around. But you know, families are empowered and their students, you know, or students, not even there, but students who feel safe. And blank, it could be welcome, it could be whatever, see, whatever, um, attend school, ready to learn. So we have that, there's something about safety that then could pull a goal, there's something about attendance that could pull a goal. And something around, you know. The family empowerment piece that then ties into some of the goals that we looked at from before with the communication plans and engagement. Activities for families.
And we've got really great measurements, all three of those all queued up, so.
Our families, families and students are empowered to attend school, and then you can finish that off, because I don't know what else.
Families.
To attend school, is that it?
To, to attend schools and then add something else to that, I don't know.
Seems like a really low bar.
That's kind of what I was thinking too, Marvin, it's like attendance is a measure, but it is not the sole objective, like maybe it's like more like. Thrive as a part of a school, as a member of the school community or something like that. So it kind of gets to the broader student experience and it's not just about showing up. Um, does that get at what you were talking about, are we talking about different things, Marvin?
No, I think that's exactly right.
I wonder if this is um. Around the idea that you're creating a culture and a climate where belonging occurs. Because if I feel seen and connected, safe and valued, like I belong with that community. Either as a family member or a student, perhaps there's some language we can include there.
And I like the opportunity to thrive in a safe. Or, you know, in an environment where I feel like I belong or feel welcome.
Maybe it's um, students, because we, we dropped the staff thread too, uh, students, families and staff. Feel a sense of belonging in the school community. Feel, yeah, feel a sense of safety and belonging in the school community, something along those lines, I don't know. Every time there's a little spark, it quickly goes out.
Okay, it's six oh five. Um, one word that I'm not clear, I think that uh, there was consensus to retain the word climate. In this cornerstone, but I know that there was a good reason to potentially eliminate it as well. So I need to better understand where the board is in terms of keeping the word climate.
I think we're keeping the word climate.
Okay, any other feedback? I can kind of share a little bit about next steps, um, if we feel like we have sufficiently provided input on cornerstone four. Okay, what I'm hearing um, in terms of next steps are, we would uh, go ahead and take all of the feedback here. Refined the cornerstone definition, the long-term objectives, one pager sent out to um. The board for review and uh, the logistics of how that works will allow kind of leadership to. Share in terms of whether you respond back, reply all, but we'll need to gather feedback in a relatively short period of time. So that the cabinet can really be working on how to put those strategies in place based on the feedback both from here and then. From the conversation, does that make sense?
So uh, Chair, I'm asking for clarity relative to timeline. Um, these are relative to a board feedback to Jill's point, um, one-on-one. Uh, directly to you would need to be the way, otherwise they are, they're in a serial. Yeah, meeting and through email, um, and, and we want to prevent that. But uh, from the cabinet's perspective and driving cabinet work, um, my question is um, timeline for the one pager. And board review, uh, and then hand off to us, uh, be mindful that we want to have um, a. Draft ready to go out to the CAC, uh, the week of the twenty-fourth, um, preferably the front end of that week. Give CAC members um, sufficient time to dig in and, and to be able to read and be prepared for the evening.
I'm kind of, I don't want to set a timeline, what is, what is realistic from your perspective in terms of getting that to us? I think board, I think we should just accept a forty-eight hour window and say we're gonna have two days, and if you can't get it in, it's unfortunate. Um, and then hopefully back to the cabinet, pretty quickly after that, um, what are you all thinking?
Yeah.
By this Friday.
Okay, so, so if you send out to us, like, is tomorrow too soon, I know we just gave, we went through a ton of stuff, but tomorrow or Wednesday? And then we get our thoughts back to you by Friday. Does that work or is that too, are we moving too quick, and it's okay to say we're moving too quick, I'm kind of just throwing things out. Oh, I see, okay, so you give it. Over the weekend, we get our thoughts back to you on Monday, and then you refine from there and then it goes strictly to cabinet. It's a, let's, let's rumble through it, is that too quickly? I mean, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna, I was looking at the calendar and maybe we. Accept that, you know, for the CAC as well, you know, if it's by that Wednesday or Thursday. I mean, they have. A few, a couple less days to kind of look it over, but, and that would give cabinet more time. Instead of on the twenty-fourth.
Uh, so um, if Point North hands it to you on the fourteenth, you have until the seventeenth. Point North team, how long would you need to review that, um, and uh, what is your thinking relative to handing it off to cabinet?
I would think that we would strive for delivering on Thursday, so you have a day and the weekend. We will need to meet, um, in particular with at least a couple of board members. If the feedback is not in alignment, we need time to work through what those final words are. It feels like we're pretty close, but. I mean, even just the feedback here from the board, we got today. I mean, even just the feedback here from the board, we got today. Couple hours before walking in. So we need enough time to make sure that we're reflecting what's been said. And then I, I am concerned about the timeline that we have right now and cabinet having enough time to work through these words. You've spent a lot of time getting to this point. I hate to shortcut the end and not feel like the words are not the right words. Because it's each of you in this room that has to go out and talk about why those words matter so much. The other piece that I want to just really emphasize is. We heard from the community, we need to do another check. Are the words from the community making it in? To the goals and to the, the strategies. And so we want enough time to be able to make sure that everyone feels comfortable, that you can tell that story in front of pack. This is how your feedback impacted and influenced this strategic plan. The other piece of this is that framework and we're making edits to what that framework graphic will look like. That all goes together and you need to be able to see the words. Then you need to see how the words live into that graphic. And the cabinet needs enough time to really work with those words to be able to ensure the strategy is aligned. So. I know we're on a fast track and we'll move as fast as we can, um. But I just want to caution, let's not move too fast that you don't feel like it's really your plan. And then you feel good in front of the cat.
So what is, what is our alternative? What's the alternative timelines? Push the CAC back. Doc, Dr. Lynn and Vice Chair, and you all have been leading on this. I don't have an objection with that, but I'm curious what your thoughts are.
Well, um. I feel like we should finalize the, the language that we talked about, right? And, and move it forward.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, and. Tracy and Dr. Sue probably, I mean, in terms of logistics of sort of changing. That I'm wondering about, which might be fine.
If you, logistically, if you were to take the second and move it to the ninth, that's Wednesday, that, that's still a Wednesday, push it out one week. The feedback then received from that team. Would still, uh, potentially give cabinet any revisions that come out of that relative to language that we. That was missed, um, and needs to be into the document from the community, uh, would give us until, um. The eighteenth. So that a potential final draft is to the board for the twenty-first meeting.
I mean, I'm fine with that shift.
The, the other piece, just as, as a placeholder, um, for the board is, is also that. At the very tail end of the CAC, we were also going to invite members of that committee to continue on the journey with us relative to the integrated guidance. Um, and we have that first date set for the fifteenth. Of November for that, that first meeting because that timeline, um, is now upon us. Uh, in terms of being prepared and having that report ready to the state, um, by, by March. Um, David. David, thank you. David, thinking about, about that timeline, moving it to the ninth. Uh, we're still, we still have a week to prepare relative to the fifteenth. Is that doable? Okay, all right. So I would offer, uh, for everyone's consideration, moving the CAC to the ninth. Tracy, do you have any heartburn around that? I'm sorry? No, okay. All right. So we could make that adjustment, move the CAC to the ninth. That now gives another week potentially. Worst case scenario, we could have it to the CAC, uh, like on Friday before, but that is asking a great deal. You know, and, and there's nothing to say that giving it to them any earlier is gonna make it any different. Um, you know, I, I, I think in reality. Uh, but I also want to be mindful. So if we can hit a sweet spot of somewhere on that Wednesday or Thursday of that week, be able to have it to them. Um, and then a reminder, um, just out of, um, you know, courtesy and respect for the work, um, and, and their journey with us.
Have, have, have the CAC folks been invited already?
Yeah, yes, they have.
Yeah, that's, that's my only concern is that if you, if you change it, you likely will lose some. And then we won't have the level of engagement that we were hoping to have, but I don't know how many of RSVP.
Thirty-nine RSVPs. So is there a.
We're back to.
We're, we're just kind of thinking out, out here. Is there a, um. Is there a way to maintain the meeting at that time without it being a final product, final product with the disclaimer? This is our current version or our closest version. I'm, I'm, I really don't know what I'm talking about. I'm just trying to see if there's a creative way to.
Yeah, what if we tried to do a slightly concurrent process? That as we're hammering out the exact details of the wording of the goals and objectives. Cabinet is already doing the work of the measurements based on what they've heard tonight, based on the first draft of that. And then it's, um, because I think everybody in the room kind of heard the same thing. We're gonna go in the right direction. It's just what it's gonna look like by the time we get it cleaned up. And then we've got a pretty solid draft to take to the CAC. Cabinet's been able to get some of that work done. If something big comes out of the CAC. Will obviously have to regroup and redo, but it's not going to be every single cornerstone has a major impact. That, I hope.
Because then when you send out that one pager, it could go to everyone that cabinet work can start.
Exactly. It's a little messy, but. Timeline, that might be the best way to get the job done. They started.
The changes will be, they will be small. They have to be reported. I mean, buys you an extra few hours.
But I guess I'd go back to my earlier recommendation that, no. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
When I've been involved in a strategic planning process and we, and we haven't applied through. We don't rely on ourselves to do the Will Smith thing. We let the outside, we'll help us with that. So, uh, if, if we would. Give. Our confidence and trust to Point North to, to come back with a document that we can simply approve. In the next couple of days, then we can stay on our timeline.
I think that's pretty similar to what Jill is suggesting.
Yeah, so it would be a Thursday-ish or, uh, uh, as soon as possible this week, we get that one pager. We can assume that that's a fairly close draft document that cabinet can start working on. We as the board can have individual emails with you about questions or tweaks. And then sort of go from there.
Well, and I like, I do think the, the last, second to last page is a good kind of starting point. Like based on our conversation in that document. Like cornerstone gets linked to equity policy, and then it links to strategy, gets linked to the sub portions, so. It's gonna be a tight timeline, but I think, does that seem like the best flow? We keep, we keep the current date, try to work concurrently. And then we'll just be flexible with each other as we navigate this.
Yeah.
I think there's some power in taking to the CAC, not a final product too, if we're asking for feedback.
Yeah.
So it allows the opportunity to take that feedback. So.
All right. Anything else? Any other comments, questions, thoughts, ideas? Point North, Lisa and John L, thank you so much for working quickly on this. I know we're putting it to you with the timelines, but, um. Grateful for all your work.
Yes, thank you.
And we'll see you soon.